Tuesday, May 29th. This is a special meeting. It's part of our makeup meeting for the May 15th meeting, which was canceled because of the bad weather. And then we also, the main feature this evening will be a work session on the Chapel Quay Hamlet brainstorming. So I'll go straight into our first item. Our first item is a public hearing. This is for the King Street Commons LLC. This is an application for a special use permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan approval, 133 King Street, Route 120. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. How are you, Michael? Hope it's not that thumb drive again. While you're setting that up, Sabrina, would you like to run through your notes and we'll get that going?
Sure. I just have a few comments. You know, as I indicated in my first comment, just to refresh the board, the applicant has demonstrated conformance with the MFRC incentive, density incentives. So they are compliant there. This is considered a type-two action in accordance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Also provided with the recent submission is the variance that was received by the applicant for the side yard setback. So they have gotten everything, and I just requested that that ZBA variance be reflected on the plans as a note in the conformance table. Also in the zoning conformance table, they have, where none required is stated, that the proper regulation citation be included in the zoning conformance chart or referenced. We'd also like information on refuse collection and/or refuse disposal, where the refuse...
Location and...
The location, frequency of pickup, that type of thing, given the number of units. And then the last comment was the recreation fee. There's supposed to be a land set aside or a payment in accordance with the schedule in the town fee schedule. So there's a condition that we'll need to incorporate in the resolution if the board so chooses.
Okay.
And that's it for my comments.
Bob, did you have any comments?
Oh, yes.
Oh, sure. Please.
About the refuse pickup, will they be using a private refuse pickup service?
Not sure. They'll probably be using town, but you know, where the facilities would be located, how, you know, whether they're internal to the buildings or external, that type of thing.
And we have usual standards anyway, right? Kind of enclosure and that sort of thing.
Exactly. And they just need to show it on the site plan and, you know, as we always require.
Okay. Okay. Bob, do you want to run through your...
Oh, sure. ST 1, ST 4 really have to do with the new impervious areas, and it's still unclear, based on my review of the reports and the maps, exactly what you're proposing. So please take a look at those four items, get that clarified for the next report. In light of the applicant's evidently infiltrating the water, 100-year storm into the ground, there's still going to be an overflow extent, and he's tied it into a property that goes drainage, it goes over private property. So I would think in my mind, I'd highly recommend an easement for that in case it has to be repaired. That's ST 5. ST 6, plant should show the location of existing downstream drainage system, drainage that's associated with. I'm not quite sure what's there, Michael, so...
It's a six-inch pipe that goes down, and it is connected to the catch basin in front of the next building. It's just there. It's been there. That's what they've always used. So I'm not doing something new. I'm not going to dig up the guy's yard or his, front of his property. I'm just connecting to a pipe that's there.
But I think it's important to know where it is.
Can you get, Mike, use the, you can sit with a microphone, you can pick it up and sit down for it.
No, sir. But I just, you know, I'm not looking to reinvent the wheel, and if, for some reason, hydraulically, which is a smaller property than it, you would normally look for a hydraulics downstream. But if there was a problem, we still can't dig up everybody else's yard below it to try to put bigger pipes. We're sort of tied to that six-inch pipe no matter what. So my trick, or what I had to do, was make it so there's no increase in volume. And there is no increase in volume. It's zero increase in volume.
Well, yes and no.
Up to 100 years' storm.
That's pre and post 100-year storm. If you have more than four inches, it's going to go in there, and the last thing I want is to approve a pipe that goes into someone's system that backs up.
Well, we get to remember when we, we have the comparison between what's there now and what is there now, meaning what we're proposing. We have to do it minus the building. We can't count the existing building. That has to be considered one, okay? So already, there is a large amount that we're reducing it, including, you know, more than usual, because we're not counting that building. If we counted the building, the flow would be such that we would almost not need anything. But we need something because we're not going to count the building, so there is a slight increase. But we're still dealing down with, in a 100-year storm, just barely above one CFS. So the flows are very, very, very small. Our property is .17 acres. We don't have a large property. And the area, if I put that up, is like, everywhere is paved. It's that part of town. It's just pavement everywhere. So you can't get away from that. You know, it's just a little bitty, and it's not like we're doing something really different with the property. There's a building on it now, and there's even more parking lot than we're doing on it. So it's, a lot is being reduced, and there's pavement areas that are off-site, that are actually off our property. We're cutting that back. Nothing is going on the property next door. The pavement actually runs over onto the, what is it, King Street something, or the condos next door.
149?
Yeah, 149.
Good question on that.
You'll have to be satisfied on that. You'll still have to be satisfied, you'll work it out with Michael.
I'd recommend it. I mean, that's the time to do it. I mean, why wait and then find out if the pipe's not working, it gets backed up, and then the neighbor's going to call us up and say, "What did you do?"
So is it a six-inch pipe going into an existing six-inch?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know where it goes. I don't know how big it is. I don't know if it's clogged up.
It goes to the catch basin.
I have no idea.
We can bring in a surveyor to locate it and everything else, but we're spending money that even though we're going to now know where it goes, we're not going to dig it up and put a bigger pipe in or anything like that. We'll just know where it goes.
Well, I'm not saying that, but at least know where it goes, know it's sufficient, and again, an easement around it in case you have to repair it in the future.
What happens if the pipe from this property to that catch basin is damaged or collapsed?
Right.
Then what do you do?
Well, we would have to fix it, or...
Well, you have to have an easement.
It would be an issue between that homeowner and the person that owns this property. They'd have to talk to each other and say, "The pipe that is coming from your lawn or your property has broken. Fix it." We can know where it is. We can't make the guy give us an easement now. We can just show where it is and hope that it's in the easement that was provided, but there's no guarantee of that.
Yeah, I'm surprised there's not something on the record previous because...
Yeah, they just drew in a thing and said...
It's always been like this, but that doesn't mean it's correct.
Yeah.
On the easement issue, you know, as with any application that we review that requires easements, my recommendation would be, prior to the signing of the site plans, that the applicant would submit an easement between this property and the neighboring property, since they're proposing to install infrastructure on that neighboring property.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We're not installing anything. We're just hooking to what exists already. I'm not going into the guy's yard to dig, you know...
No, we understand that.
Okay, okay. I just want to know so that...
I think what counsel is saying is, and Dick is alluding to, is some sort of conveyance, some sort of document that gives you the right to make the necessary repairs. Perhaps it would be mutual between the parties, but it probably would be good planning to have that available so that any kind of repair can be done, and we know how to do it at this point, as opposed to when something goes wrong, trying to figure out...
What's going wrong?
Rock, scissors, whatever, to decide how we do it.
So maybe it doesn't have to be an easement, as long as there is an agreement, something...
It's there, okay. Then everybody understands where it's coming from.
Yeah, the question on the downward property, do they use infiltrators, or they were built before that time?
No, I doubt very much that they did anything down below. It's old, existing, and I don't know of anything that was on...
So anyway, that's that. ST 7, ST 8 are the same thing. Shielded deep test holes, ST 9. ST 10 incorporate the soil data sheets in the stormwater report. Still have to submit the stormwater management application fee, 750. Then I have general comments regarding the sewage flows. Similar in fashion what we did with Tavo. I'd recommend that you do the pre and post to see if there's an increase in flow in the sewage.
I have that for you, that information.
All the reason I ask that is because Westchester County Plan and Department always likes to make certain that if you're increasing the design flows in the sewage, that there's a three-to-one ratio improvement of INI.
Right.
You need to know that.
Right.
G 2, obviously you'd need to get a sanitary sewer connection permit from DPW. G 3, you'd have to get a water tapping permit from DPW as well for the two water service lines. And also 2, that's a state road, you'd have to get a New York State highway requirement as well. And the applicant would be required to pay an inspection fee of 3%. So they should include a engineer's estimate.
There is an estimate in there.
Okay.
Are any of these things, are all these something, things that we would condition? Are you comfortable with that, or...
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. We took your thunder, so I mean, sorry. We're going to move on. So anyway, anything you want to add?
No, I appreciate that you have the meeting tonight, you know, to make a, that was such a great night for me. So it was a horrible night. It took me three hours to get home. I got the phone call when I was in front of the high school, and I kept on driving. All, I was, I didn't even forgot this part. I was partially blind because they just looked at my retinas. So I'm blind driving at night, in the evening anyway. And I'm driving, and I just about get them out to Chapel Quay, and I have to turn around. And I had to come back to the high school, down across the high school, up the parkway to get to my office. It was a disaster. And I got the call that we didn't have a meeting, but...
We have two public hearings.
Yes. Any other comments, questions from board members?
I have just a whole bunch of, I am not familiar with or have forgotten the history of this project, but unless I'm mistaken, what we have here is an application for a density increase, right? And it, there is just, unless there's some information that's like somewhere, must be somewhere, more information on this project than this one site plan, it's really hard for me to have anything but really negative opinions about the request. I, and I just need to be more informed about this, I think, before I can have, I guess, anything intelligent to say that.
How we got, there's, what's the right word for it? There's things that allow you to go a little larger, like parking inside.
No, I have, I understand that. I understand that, but...
That's all we did. And that allowed us to go with the, it's a three-bedroom, two-family house, you know, three bedrooms each unit.
Just because you're allowed to do it, though, doesn't mean that you have the right to do it.
No.
It's a request.
You know, this is a request, and we have been here before. This isn't new. I know, I understand.
All I'm saying is, it may not be new, and there may be more information. I don't have it in front of me. This is not enough information to make a judgment on this, if you ask me. I don't, I actually, probably, Sabrina, probably it would be helpful to understand the rationale for some of these incentives that we have in the code. I don't understand them, and in this particular case, to get an incentive to go for underground parking, when in fact, that's the only way you can get any parking on this piece of property. It appears from this drawing, let me finish. It appears from this drawing, to me, is an illogical incentive. Why would, I mean, you're getting some, you're getting, and let me, please, can I just finish? It seems to me that we are incentivizing something that you already have to do in order to make the project go. You're going to do it anyway. So that's number one. Number two, I don't, it looks like it adds up to an extra, what, 30%? 40%? 30% increase, something like that? On a site which is so tight...
It's a small site.
On a site, I really need you to, I've got to ask you, let me finish, okay? Because we're not going anywhere if you keep interrupting me. I promised to finish quickly. Just let me get my thoughts out. On a site which is so tight, and there is, I don't understand how anything works on this site. I don't understand what the parking is. I don't understand how anybody gets in and out. I don't understand the architecture of the building. I don't understand how it presents itself to the street. I don't understand how it fits in the community. There is, and maybe all information's available, but it's not available in front of us tonight. So this looks like one of the classic, and it happens all the time, and developers always have the right to ask for as much as they can get on a property. That's how they make profit. I mean, that's their incentive to do anything, right? It's a business. But it seems to me that this is, again, one of those examples where the applicant is trying to put as much on this property as he possibly can, and I don't see how that is in any way yet been justified as being good for the town, other than maybe an extra apartment. And the consequences to circulation, the consequence of the architecture, the consequence of the street, the consequences need to be, I think, much, much better understood before one decides that the addition of an extra one unit is worth the consequences. So before I can say, have anything positive to say about this, if I don't have any more information about this, I'm against the project. I just need more information. Yes, of course, thank you.
First of all, you've seen the architecture, and you approved the architecture. We didn't just show up with this building. We actually went through a lot of things and made it so the front has a nice porch and everything else on it. Also, the location in the front was where we wanted it. We didn't want it in, but cars parked on the outside. If there wasn't an under, you know, put the cars inside in a garage, we would have tried for putting cars on the outside, but we didn't, because that didn't make any sense at all. So it looks a lot better with cars inside. The other one was a rental, it's a bonus for being able to rent the whole thing, and that's what it's going to be, is two rentals. Those are the bonuses that we have, and we didn't take full advantage of it. We took what we needed to get our three-bedroom. We went, we, I think, we needed 11,000, and we actually had 12,000-something when we got done with the incentives. We just took what we wanted, which was just the two, three-bedroom units, and that's all we wanted.
Why didn't we approve this, if we already seen it? Why, why is this, why are you here?
Went to sleep for a while, because the person who was doing the work, he doesn't just build for a living. He does something else. And this is what they do on the side. They build these nice structures. That's what they do. And that's what he was doing here. And we also got a variance already, and it was approved by this board to get the variance, was for the driveway coming in, rather than have 20, 25, 25 feet on one side that widens it out, that puts a, you could lay a 747 on it. We said, "Let's bring it down to 13 feet on that side so that we could just get in." I mean, we did all that. We went through all this.
Okay. I don't recall it, and I need to see it again.
So if I may, Michael, I mean, and I think that Mr. Curley is referencing a very valid point. It has been a while since this board has seen this application. And while they were supportive of the variance that you had requested and issued memo to the zoning board in support of the variance, while they made changes to the plan early on, none of this is reflected in this public hearing thus far. And I think that it's doing a disservice to the public not to have the history, the profiles, the architectural detailing that this board reviewed in detail previously.
Yes.
So with that said, you know, and Mr. Curley has requested the explanation of the density incentives and why they're in there, and I cannot speak to the history of the code. You know, what my responsibility was, was to verify that you're applying them correctly, that you're within the limits of what you're asking for, but the due diligence of presenting the project in totality for a public hearing falls on you.
Well, then, as a consequence, how did this end up on our agenda if the material's not what we need?
The material was submitted previously.
No, but you're just, I think, I think you're declaring that it's the applicant's responsibility to provide that information for this public hearing, and it wasn't, let me, it wasn't submitted to the town, yet it's on the agenda. I don't understand why it's on the agenda.
No, I think what Sabrina's saying is it was submitted to the town previously and reviewed previously, but the applicant perhaps did not bring the material to present to you tonight.
I understand that.
Which is, right, which is part of typically a public hearing presentation to include, you know, the whole presentation.
I'm hearing statements that we should not be hearing this without that information tonight. That's what I think I'm hearing.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that...
Why are you, how, I'm sorry. I understand why you're admonishing the applicant, because he had the understanding, this was submitted beforehand for this meeting, he had the standard, this material's adequate. He wasn't told it wasn't until now. So I guess we had, I guess...
Sorry, no, just typically, the applicant may not submit to the board everything that they're planning to present for that particular...
All right. I guess, I guess the English language, the way I understand it, is not working here tonight. So I'd be delighted to see the material that, that our staff says that we need to have for this next meeting, so we can give you a fair and honest hearing on this subject. I just don't think we have tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I do recall that we've seen this a couple of times. I don't know when the last time we saw it.
It was about a year ago, at least.
A year ago. So that's, that's a long period of time. So, and I don't know when you got the ZBA approval, when that went through, but it's really not relevant.
Copy of that's in here, yeah.
I understand it. We have that. But we did go through a lot of this, this information before. We did make some changes on this. I recall that. We made the architectural changes. We made, we twisted the building around. We changed the entrance, et cetera. We tried to, I think initially you had garages in the front, and we turned those on the side, all kinds of stuff. And I think we saw it several times, but to everyone's point here, whether, you know, the board members still have all their stuff, still, this is a public hearing, so if there are comments from the public or questions from the public, if we don't have the information in front of us, it's tough really to proceed. So I, I think it's, I think the comments that we've heard are very well taken, and we should have that information.
I would have dug into my files beforehand. I was, I've been at my office. I would have done that, and I would have brought it in, so you had it overhead, so you could see. You actually saw it and approved it. I mean, that's neither here nor there, but you did see it.
Oh, yeah, we did.
Well, we didn't approve it, because it's still before us.
Right.
No, no, no.
You supported it.
I understand, I understand what you're saying. I just don't remember it. So forgive me, I don't remember.
No, no.
So if we could see it again, it would, it would help me. Thank you.
So if I may recommend that the public hearing be continued, then, Michael, you prepare a presentation of the project in its totality for the public, so that they can see the elevations and all the site details, and the board can become comfortable or reminded of what they had previously supported and directed you on.
I don't think I have all the different plan variations.
I think you need the plan...
I think what we need is where we got to.
Correct, where we are today.
Where we got to. We don't need the original histories.
So the only thing really missing is the architecturals. That's really what's missing out of this whole thing.
I think we want an executive summary to remind everybody what happened 18 months ago.
Your microphone, Greg.
I think we're just looking for a summary to remind everybody, but what happened 18 months ago?
And I need to see the drawings.
And whatever documentation that could support you...
I'll go through the file, but understand that...
Freshen our memories.
Even me with my superior mind, I don't know everything that happened before. As we're going through the process, we're constantly changing.
Michael, we're not asking for everything.
That's okay. But again, it's customary when we have public hearings, people will summarize the project. Again, the public is seeing it for the first time. They're commenting for the first time in public. So it's customary that they'll, we get a summary where we've been. It's not necessarily lengthy, and of course, we have the...
And you don't have to show pictures of where we started.
Right.
What is, what the board is interested in, and the public is interested is in understanding where we are now.
Where we got to. And again, because it's been such a long period of time in between. To Tom's point, we have a sheet of paper, and, and of course, information about the ZBA, and of course, the comments from Sabrina and Bob.
Okay.
I have another question. Is there a fence that's going to be on the backside of this property?
There's going to be a fence at the end of the parking lot to, when you drive in, you can't drive down over there, the existing retaining wall down there. Did we call for a fence back there? I don't know, but if you think there should be a fence along the top of that wall, we can do that.
Well, it depends. I mean, you show parts of a building, you know, the, of the condos that are your neighbors.
Well, the condos, there's no, there's no wall on that side. It's only in the back, there's a, there's a retaining wall if you look to the back.
Yeah, no, I see. It says low scenery retaining wall for part of it. And it's, you know, it's 21 feet from the back of one building to...
It's not even on us. It's actually off of us, so...
Right, it's off-site?
Yeah, it's actually...
Yeah, it's off-site. It's 21 feet beyond your property line to the back of one of the condo buildings. And my sense is that, that with the lights going in and the lights going out, there should be consideration to keep those lights out of that building's windows. Now, you have it coming in. Another question I have on this, I guess we never, I never noticed this before, but is that the driveway is 10 feet coming in. Why? That's it.
It's, well, 10 feet is a minimum size on a driveway, but...
We just have to call it a covered patio, unless that's an artifact. That's back there, but not here.
No, no, there's no driveway up here at all.
How do you get in?
You come in the same entrance that exists now.
With seat...
I see, I'm disoriented. Okay, good. My mistake.
It's exactly the same difference-wise. We didn't, we didn't move up or down. We're going in the same, the only thing we did is we, we're not going over onto the condo property. I never know why they did that in the first place.
But take a look at, you know, how to prevent light spillage, you know, over the property from headlights and any security lights that are going to be in the back of the building.
Yeah, we have, well, we have some, Arby, no, Arby Vitae's along the back to help screen the property, because one of the comments, when they gave it to Mr. Coleman, was that, "I don't have any landscaping plans, so we created one. There's not much room for landscaping," but we were able to...
Right, right.
Hey, love to see that. Yeah, that's on the plan, that's on the...
Good. Okay, and...
Thank you, Michael.
When can we reschedule this, Kellen?
I think your July meeting?
Which year?
This year.
I don't want to do this again.
July 17?
Yeah.
Okay. I think also what we should do is, you know, again, the understanding is that we'll get that information or have that information...
We have that.
...in the hearing itself, but maybe we could just remind people when they just Hearing itself, but maybe we could just remind people when they just give us a single sheet, it's like, we're going to need more, by the way, for the public hearing.
I would have, like I said, I was there. I could have gone through the file and dug things up, made copies and had at least person to look at.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
I did.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, okay. Good night. Thanks.
Mike, did you leave something?
Did you, your thumb drive?
No, no.
It's okay. He took it.
He took it. That's just the image that's up there.
Okay.
When you X out of it, it'll disappear.
Yep, we go on to our next item and this is an informal hearing for a pending application. This is the Appel, uh, Missasias. I've ground that one to the ground. Hammond Ridge Conservation Subdivision Lot Three. This is the application for a Site Development Plan Amendment, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan Approval for a swimming pool eighteen Hammond Ridge Road. Sabrina, would you like to run through your comments while we're.
Absolutely. Um, just to refresh the board, um, you folks have reviewed this, um, at least one other time before. This application is to install a pool and a terrace behind, um, the existing home. The property is located within the Hammond Ridge Conservation Subdivision. And in reviewing the application, um, there are setbacks are in conformance. Most of the project is in conformance. All of the work is located outside of the existing clearing and grading limit line, which is unusual to these applications. In this instance, it is outside of that line. The one major issue, it's a type-two action in accordance with SECR. Um, you know, there were some environmental analyses that were done and Bob can speak more directly to those. But the project, um, is, uh, is an issue of coverage, development coverage. The property itself exceeded the allowable development coverage before the planned improvements that are before you. The applicant has reduced some areas of that existing imperviousness. And they are still over what is currently allowed. Just to give you a sense, they're looking at a proposed development coverage of nine thousand four hundred and sixty-eight square feet, where seven thousand three hundred and eighty-eight point seven five are allowed. So, um, you know, it's really up to your purview as to how you want to handle that. If you recall previously, um, there were trees in the area. They've relocated the trees to, uh, up front to provide more privacy from the roadway. You guys have discussed this. The applicant has been very receptive to those site plan changes you have requested. But I think for me, the, the largest issue is the development coverage.
I have a question. I'm sure I'm just misreading it. So on your fourth bullet, it says that it would be allowed up to fifteen thousand nine hundred and nine.
That is zoning development coverage. This is a conservation subdivision.
Oh, gotcha.
So you folks specified the amount, but I just wanted to give you kind of the relationship of what, uh, a lot like this in, not in a conservation subdivision would allow.
And even though this is a conservation, uh, subdivision, some of these lots are oversized for the area anyway.
Correct. And, and, and I think that the applicant can actually speak to the environmental condition of the lot. There are wetlands located off-site which bleed onto the site. There are steep slopes on the site. So they're really trying to work with the existing land, trying to get all of the accommodations that are looking for. So with that said, um, you can either hear from Bob or hear from the applicant to kind of talk about the site.
Is the number though about twenty-one hundred feet? That's what's over? Does two thousand eighty?
Correct.
Okay.
Around thereabouts.
Okay. Bob, do you want to run through your comments?
The property disturbance is more than the standard five thousand square feet land development activity. Therefore, they need a SWIP from the DEC as well. They did present a stormwater report, but they did not get the deep test hole. So we have to schedule those with Terry.
Correct.
And we'll witness those whenever you decide to do those. Contact Terry if you like. General comments, G one, G two. Basically, I looked at the steep slopes study and there's no permit required based on the amount of activity on the existing grade, so that's fine. And the applicant would obtain a street opening permit from DPW since the access for construction is coming onto a town road as well. And that's it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Good evening.
Yep.
Glenn Tyser's, landscape architect representing Mitchell Appel, um, homeowner. So when we were here last, we'd gone through the numbers and, um, what I know the board was concerned about was the position of this pool in the side yard. So we did look at other parts of the property. Um, we looked immediately behind the house. There is, um, some development there, but it's also heavily, um, heavily laid out with utilities. So there's generators, gas lines, electric line, plumbing lines. The well is back there. So we basically ruled out the immediate area behind the house. There's also some steep slopes further back. There is a steep slopes map that had been upgraded, which was requested to include it, the entire site, which is in this package. So what we did was we looked at really the west side of the, of the, south side of the property. So the pool is now located further back behind the house in the rear yard. So it's technically now in the rear yard. Um, this proposal basically keeps the same size pool and the same size terrace. We have not increased that. It does require a modest amount of boulder retaining in that far north or the far west, southwest corner. Because the grade does drop off there a little bit. So it's about four feet, which accounts for about a hundred and twenty square feet in order to do that of coverage. So that's the only increase. Everything else is basically the same. So we had gone through, you know, the whole process of looking at steep slopes. We had gone through the process of looking at where the wetlands are and we've upgraded the plan to show the DEC wetlands off-site, which has been submitted as a result of, um, your concerns about that. The pool is a hundred and ninety feet away from the wetlands, the DEC wetlands. So that's really not an issue. The access is basically right off of, um, right off the street. So it's fairly easy. There are a few trees that all fall with under the eight-inch purview for removal. So there are beech trees. They're about six inches. Um, none of them require a permit to move. So I think that's a positive to this. Um, so I think all in all, the location seems to be a better one. It's being now in the rear yard. It, uh, very limited disturbance in order to do that. You know, it's going to be the access road. It's temporary. They could put in to do it and then taken out at the end of the job. It's visit, it's really impossible to see this pool, especially this time of year, from any of the neighbors. I do have a Google Earth image in your package. I can pull one up here as well. So it's fairly well isolated. Uh, Mitchell has contacted the homeowners association, which has no problem with this. He's talked to the immediate neighbors that are closest to it. Uh, this property is surrounded on three sides by the Hammond Ridge open space area. So it's not as if it's in the face of a neighbor. Um, so it's relatively secluded back there. We've talked about giving up the gravel parking area and some other areas, um, because we know we're asking for a little bit more. But I think this plan, uh, based on the last comments, is probably a better plan.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
Yeah, I have a, how does the conservation area work? If you have one acre zoning, then you apply the half-acre zoning kind of, uh, development coverage numbers? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think it was a tool that we used in this particular development because we had other constraints. And so frankly, we imposed this conservation subdivision rule not on top of it because it gave us much more flexibility in planning the overall.
Yeah, and you can see the trails that have resulted from it, which are.
Yeah, well, the trails were there. The trails were being protected, et cetera.
Yeah.
So, um, it was not necessarily obviously a, a traditional cluster that we, we put together. But it was, and I don't recall all the details, but, uh, it was, it was used as a tool to get us to certain goals. And it's, uh, so it's not what you'd conventionally normally see, like random farms, for example, where really we're getting homes in much closer together. So it was intended, I think, at least in our side of this development. I don't think North Castle did the same. But we, we had some concerns with some of the natural environmental concern, um, features. And, uh, this gave us the ability to, to, um, archi, you know, create some of those protections.
Okay, so that if we allow all the overages here, will that then foster requests for additional potential overages in the rest of the development and therefore knock it all out?
Well, I mean, that's. I guess we can ask the applicant that, but it's, it's a good question. Because I don't know. How many homes do we have in the Newcastle section?
I think about twenty.
Maybe.
Twenty-four, something like that.
Yeah, okay.
Could be two and eighteen and twenty-four.
Yeah, so it could be considerable if you start adding all these things up.
So the only way, now I'm trying to think, well, okay, how do we take some of the things we've done recently with, with how this was done? And I can see, you know, the conservation approach where we have it elsewhere where if it's one acre zoning to begin with, then, you know, we knock it down to one-half as far as the rules go. Now, how big is this piece of property?
This is two point.
Nine two two.
Nine two acres.
Two point nine two?
It's an oversized lot.
An oversized lot. So I could, uh, you know, we can't do spot zoning and make this a two-acre zone.
Right, right.
But the only way I see any logic to go forward with, with this overage is that, well, we change the rules for it and, and say, yeah, we still want halvesies, but if you've got two point nine, we'll give you the equivalent of one acre.
Well.
If I, if I may, I, I mean, the one thing that is, is remarkable about this is compared to many of the other, um, overages you've been examining lately is that this is not in violation of the clearing and grading limit line. Um, and I think that that is a huge distinction between other projects that you have looked at that have that development over, coverage overage and they've exceeded the clearing and grading limit line. So just as a point of note for the board to consider as you discuss this.
Well, it is certainly a factor, but it's, and another factor is that it's a virtually a three-acre lot. But the, the development coverages, they relate to hard stand and runoff and a whole bunch of other issues. The bigger the buildings, the more they can be seen from the road and all that stuff. So that, you know, that's a, a different kind of impact, uh, because it's water and it's a visual impact.
Correct.
Yep.
Whereas the clearing and grading lines, they can be restored. You know, if we wish to, you know, take a look and say, no, you've gone too far. They can be restored. But it's harder to restore something once it's built.
Yep. And there were some reasons, um, in all these particular lots, why we came up with, why we, why staff and everyone altogether came up with all these various measurements and, and sizes. And again, to your point, Dick, it was the aggregate impact that we were concerned with and making sure that each lot had enough flexibility. I'm, I'm unconvinced that we, we can't do more in terms of the location of the pool. I, I, I understand the applicant's position that it's technically perhaps a foot or so behind, you know, one end of the pool, but it really is not still behind the house. I don't consider it really to be in the rear yard.
Right.
And, and the other issue is that the elevation, I had thought that the elevation change from the road to here was much more substantial. It's not. It's only about six feet, I guess. Six or eight feet at most. Uh, when I looked at all the maps and saw what the, um, the lines were. So although you've said verbally, you've gotten this, uh, information from the association and your neighbors, I think it would be good to have notes in the file from each, you know, stating that they have no objections. And that's nice to see now, but of course, we, we try to plan for the future. So we might have someone who comes in later on and says, geez, I can't believe they have this, this pool in the side yard or across the street. So I, I, I think there's still room for you to pull and tuck that in same dimensions, but pull it in directly to the north, more behind the house and really put it behind the house. Um, and.
May I?
Sure.
Can you please come to the microphone?
Sure.
This is for posterity.
Sure, no problem. I, I think it's important, Mr. Kirkwood, Chairman Kirkwood, that you look at the steep slope page because we literally tried to push it as close into the house as possible because you literally have a twenty-foot or so drop and I'm not, you know, hold me to the numbers, but from the back of that house, there's a staircase that comes down and, you know.
Do you need a pointer?
So in here, there's a drop in here?
No.
Absolutely. There's a, there's a staircase, Glenn, if you want to point out. I don't.
There's a stair, so.
Stone steps, I see on the map.
Stone steps come all the way down. So there's a full grade, there's full floor grade change between here and here.
It's, it's literally impossible to shift it to the right.
Of the pergola and, and stepping down to the pool.
I don't understand why it's impossible to shift it. I, I still don't understand that.
Well, if I could try to explain it, the south side of the house is a walkout from the basement. Okay, so you guys can, and ladies can imagine the height from that point of view, right? Where the pergola sits, right there, you are stepping one step out of the main floor of the house.
Right.
So from, when you say move the pool to the right, you, you, you can't get from, you follow me, the, the level of the back of the house to be down literally one entire story.
They're called retaining walls. I, I, unless, oh, forgive me. I, I, I'm not, I'm not saying that.
Let me just, let me just. Let me just finish one thing, sir.
Sure.
I apologize. As far as that point of, I think your biggest concern for that is the neighbors.
Neighbors and future neighbors. I mean, this is just what we planned.
Agreed.
Yeah.
And I want to make sure we accommodate the neighbors because if I was the neighbor, right, I want to make sure it makes visual sense. Glenn, if you can go to the page that shows the aerial view.
Right.
I think it's important to understand it entirely where we are. In, in regards to neighbors. So I'm surrounded entirely in the back by the Hammond Ridge open.
Open space area.
Space, uh, which cannot be built on.
Right.
And it's a big hill that I'm on, so there's nobody literally that's going to be behind me behind that. And the only neighbors are what you see in the picture across, um, which are hundreds of feet away and frankly, not facing my backyard. The only one that is remotely, ironically, there are rock abutments and massive trees and all those brown spots that you, you cannot see the houses. It's, it's physically impossible if you were standing on that lot to see my neighbors' houses across the street. So I, I'm, I'm happy to try to say to you, if I could move the pools, you know, two, three, four feet to the right, it's just, I think, as the landscape architect would put it, it, it just doesn't make any sense from the location and it won't improve anything from the sightlines of the neighbor, is all I wanted to respectfully point out.
No, I understand.
I, uh, thank you. I, um, well, there, there are, there are some considerations that I think go into this concern about putting the pool in and putting the pool in where you would want to put it. So I want to go back for a second here and ask Sabrina or somebody. I'm, Sabrina, I'm sure you can answer this question. So the, there's this fifteen percent sort of extra that one can build above the approved square footage. And what, how, what triggers that, the right, or how does that, does somebody just come?
You do.
Do they have to come back and apply again to get the extra fifteen percent?
It is your resolution, which, um, your initial resolution for the subdivision. You provided allowances of ten percent in building coverage and fifteen percent in development coverage to allow folks to put in the pools, the porches, the decks, the things that weren't necessarily conceptualized when the house was first constructed, but typical homeowners would like afterwards.
We grant it as a matter of right. They don't have to, I mean, they have to go through the process.
They have to go through a building permit process and demonstrate that they are within that allowance as approved by the planning board.
So we've already pre-approved it, subs- subject to your review of, of it, correct?
We pre-approved a path.
We've pre-approved the fifteen percent.
You've pre-approved a path, subject to building permit review of the actual numbers. That's different than my review.
No, I, well, the town review.
Yes. Correct.
So, uh, then we ended up with eighty-eight hundred square feet, we discover, right? And now there's a request for an extra, I guess, twelve hundred square feet, which gets us to twenty-one hundred over, right? And it's a twelve hundred square feet, plus or minus a little bit that you're able to take away, right? Which is the request for the pool.
That's correct.
And I, I understand what you're saying about your neighbors and what they can see and can't see and, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate the effort and we haven't seen it. I don't know if it doesn't exist, but probably going to want to see it. A notice declaration, whatever, if your homeowners association is saying, yeah, we have no problem with this. But that doesn't, that doesn't negate, I think, our concerns about where the pool is because there are future property owners and homeowners. And this is a, this is a street, right? And so you, it's not just what you see from the neighbor's property is what you see from the road. I haven't been up there to look from the road to see, to, for myself, and I will. But I get concerned about the, about setting a standard that says, yeah, it's okay to put a pool in the side yard. You pushed it back. So it's, I guess, technically behind the line of the back of the house, which puts it in the back, what you say in the backyard.
Technically in the rear yard, as I understand it. Once it gets me on the face of the house. If I push it back.
It's also technically on the side, in the side yard at the same time.
I don't see that.
Well, it is. I mean, not in the side yard setback, but it's.
Right.
Inside the house. It's, so, and it's not in the, in the rear yard setback, is it?
It's, no, it meets all setbacks for the rear yard.
Right, so it's in the side yard. As, as much as it's in the rear yard, it's in the side yard. And in any event, whether you call it side yard or not, it's visible from the road.
It is invisible. That's what I'm saying. I think you really do have to see it.
Then I would need to go out and see it.
Because it's been, you, you, before, I think your concern was being here where it was more to the east, that it would be more visible. So what we did is we, you know, we looked back here. We looked at all the steep slopes, steep slopes, utilities, uh, back here. This seemed to make the most sense. There's no trees that really have to come down. We're transplanting a couple, you know, six-inch beech trees. This is a, for a pretty easy construction. It's an access road in, an access road out, modest amount of grading. It's technically in my mind behind the house. It's screened. There's some, you know, it doesn't have to be screened at all, but we're showing some additional screening. Somebody saw the, uh.
It's going to be here?
The screening was going to be, um, right down around here.
Okay.
So, so, you know, there's a fence there and if somebody didn't want to see the fence, we had some planting, that kind of thing.
So you're not screening, you're not screening, there's nothing screened pool-wise, in my opinion.
It's really all about the location being close enough to the house, easy enough to get to, not in anybody's face. The numbers are the numbers. We're pleading with you on the numbers. In terms of the mitigation or the adverse impact on the neighborhood, I honestly believe there is none.
Well, I think we should go because I tend to, from listening to everything and seeing the grades, I tend to agree with you, but I'd like to see it.
So if I could, this is, I think we're, uh, another threshold question, which are the numbers. And we had this conversation last time, as I recall. I do remember this one. We had this conversation last time, which was, um, well, gee whiz, if we were doing this, and I was on the board when the original Hammond Ridge subdivision was approved.
Yep.
And again, I think it's a, it was a good product, I, I believe, for everybody. And again, I think it's a, it was a good product, I believe, for everybody. I think it was for the town. But the question came to my mind, if we were to be doing that today, would we be holding to the original numbers that we did back then and say, this is the appropriate amount of development and no more? Or would we look at the way people are building these days in our town and the kinds of facilities they want, amenities they want, and realize maybe the market is set for more development on these sites rather than that earlier number? I don't have the answer for that. I, and I, I do fear that there is a, a natural tendency of this sort of creeping consequences of things. And you set standards at one point because you want to protect the environment and the town for everybody, the way it is, the town that people buy into, and make their investments a home and family and all of that. And then as the years go by, they discover that, that those values are being eroded because we are changing our standards. And there is this tendency for like creep to happen. And you wake up one morning and it's, oh my gosh, what happened to my town? Where did it go? And these little incremental things, this is actually about another extra 10% or 12% or 15% or something you're asking above, something like that.
Right.
These little incremental things, if everybody comes in and we sort of all of a sudden change our standards, after a while, we're going to end up with a town which is not the town we all, I think, are obligated to protect. So that's a bigger threshold question that applies to not just your application, but to a lot of the ones that we're seeing these days. If people come in and say, we want more, we want more, we want more. It's a real tough question.
Yeah, I understand that. I know each one is, has to be looked at individually also. You know, a house of this, in this neighborhood with a swimming pool is not unusual. You know, I would think most people would expect it. Not that they're guaranteed it, but, you know, the neighbor to the east certainly has a pool. I don't know whether they had to come before you to do that. My sense is yes, for any swimming pool, as I understand it. So, you know, the idea of.
No, they didn't have to come before us, they were within their, the guidelines.
If they were within the guidelines, then they can handle it with staff.
Yep. So, you know, I don't know what the scenario was for that. But the thought is that, you know, a house in that neighborhood, most people are probably looking for a pool. I can see if the pool is within the clearing and ready limit line, that's a, no, no. If it requires a side yard, rear yard variance, that's, I understand that too. Those things all add up. Although this is, is an ask in terms of square footage, you know, it's not like this property can't support that and can't protect the neighborhood from it. You know, it being pushed back in that location, I think, when you see the site, it'll be quite evident that, you know, it's a relatively level spot for it to go. It makes sense. It can be accessed from that lower level, which is a bonus. It allows, there's not a whole lot of space here for entertaining. I mean, here's the septic system is way over here. That's the only real open lawn. You know, these slopes come all the way down and through here. There's not as many options as you may think. And the fact that at the end of the day, nobody will know it's even there except these guys.
Well, to try and put some of these thoughts together, you know, I can see several sides to this, this story. And the, the one I just want to get a sense of is, is this the largest piece of property in Hammond Ridge? Do we know? First or second?
It's either the largest or the second largest.
All right.
And to your point, one of the comments you guys made earlier about other homes in the 18 to 20 homes that are on the Newcastle side as opposed to the Armonk side, this is the largest lot by far for that. And most of the other homes, there's around, I want to say 10 homes on this part, which is more spread out. And the remainder of the other homes on the Newcastle side are literally, I think, on one acre possibly, where they are literally on top of each other. And frankly, couldn't bring an application like this in front of you.
Oh, they could, but you wouldn't get nearly as far.
So if that answers your question.
Okay, that helps me, thank you.
Sabrina, would, has this been looked at by the, the building inspector? And has he made a determination that this is, in fact, the rear yard, not the side yard? And that a variance is not required?
Correct, he has.
Okay.
He has, before I put the application before you, I had him look at it and answer that question.
Okay. Well, I guess the other issue is, I know you've offered this, this one area for the stone curb and pulling this out and putting some gravel in there for some reduction in some of the coverage, but perhaps you'll, you'll need to be a little bit more creative with some of the other things that you're proposing here in terms of reducing coverage. I mean, you've got, you know, we've had this before. We've had people have done different things with their decks instead of a full deck with a pool. They've done some sort of things with grass, gotten some sort of credit for that with some permeable treatments, et cetera. You have a lot of stuff, I mean, the reason you're over is because a lot of things happened behind the, behind this building. The pool should have been or could have been right smack in the back, except that a pergola went there and that was probably the thing that put you over the top.
You could move the pergola.
Yeah. So that would be, that's the natural place where the pool would be, in the backyard and without any issues and nice and level. But the reason you've got that and now you're over and then you're asking to go over more is, that's the problem. So we understand that it's large and I think we'll work with you, but perhaps you can come up with other issues and let's take a good look at all the screening that you're proposing. You've got your LP tank down here on the side hill down below the pool. I know that's, that's good for loading, I mean, for, you know, for filling, et cetera. Let's make sure that's screened to make sure that the pool equipment over on the west side, excuse me, south side is fully screened, really screened. And maybe we can take care of those kinds of issues that we have in terms of visibility and we'll be convinced as well as you are that we don't have an issue whatsoever. Without, without, you know, ruining your sun exposure for what you want for the pool as well.
Chairman Kirkwood, to be perfectly blunt about it, I totally understand the concern of the coverage question of whether the board should approve something like this because it is over the coverage. It's within that 15,000 number that you point out in regards to the town. It's over the number in regards to the conservation subdivision. There's the question of whether the number that's on the conservation subdivision was correct at all. And, and Mr. Curly, that's something you brought up at the last meeting. What's the basis of how some of those numbers come about? That is totally something that as a board, I understand you guys need to consider. But with all due respect, in regards to removing the pergola to put the pool in the dead center of the back of the house on a three-acre property that, when you look out that back window from your kitchen, all you see is a pool, this is the landscape architect and I think he could tell you right now, that makes no sense for us to move the pool there.
But the pool is not, the pool isn't anywhere right now. There is no pool right now.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting.
Moving the pool is, let's be careful about what, the fact of the matter is, you don't have to build a pool.
No, I totally understand. That's why I'm trying to say to you, I, in all fairness to you and what you have to accomplish as a board, is as Sabrina put it, we have a coverage issue here, more so than the size of the pool and we are over and it's a far enough number over that frankly, 500 square feet isn't going to make a difference. The items that you were talking about are walkways, and this is something, Glenn, you addressed at the last session, are walkways and a pergola that were all on the property prior to my purchasing of it. So I didn't add things to make it go over. This is what I had and somewhere along the way, this is what the property became, which was all permitted, as you pointed out. So I guess I'm just trying to say to you as a committee, I'm spending thousands and thousands of dollars to redraw pictures. And ultimately, I think, as Glenn points out, we really appreciate your feedback that put this in a better position. And it's, it's, it's just not possible for us to draw the picture to put it where that pergola is and.
I wasn't suggesting that, so don't, I, I made that point because that is what's causing the problem for the pool. I'm not suggesting that you take the pergola down and replace it with a pool. The issue is, the reason you're here is that there is a pergola and that was probably the thing that put you over. I'm not saying right, wrong, or in between, that's a fact. It's a fact. If you didn't have the pergola, you wouldn't be here.
The pergola.
What?
It's over without, with or without the pergola.
Sure it is.
Well, then we would have done other things as well, but I mean, that's the main thing.
Okay.
Go to another point. You would say, well, if I'm over by, what's another 500 square feet? And what it is, is another 500 square feet that you're over. I mean, right now, you're, how far over are they, 1,200, Sabrina?
I don't even know.
2,100.
2,100.
So another 500 is, you know, another bit. So it's, we're trying to make it clear that, that for people coming to us from the same subdivision in the future, well, you let them have way over. You didn't push them back at all, so I want all of this.
With all due respect, you did push it back.
Didn't push back, was I?
I'm just, I'm, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying, when people use hyperbole, they tend to. Leave out 500 as being a significant number and so, you know, they have a different view.
I think the fact is that we do hear you. We have listened, we have, you're not rubber stamping clearly anything. I've never, I've been here many, many times, nothing gets rubber stamped here. So it's not without process. And if somebody across the streets comes with a reasonable project, then you will, you'll, you'll consider it, but.
And we'll ask them for screening.
You'll ask them for screening, you'll ask them to reduce it. This is not where we started, I can assure you that. We had a, you know, a bigger pool, we had more terrace. We first had the pre-application meeting. You know, heard it loud and clear, you know, do what you can to get this thing down. So, you know, it's a modest amount of terrace, it's a smaller pool and which would be a standard pool for a house and property this size. We have located it based upon the last meeting for, to technically get it into the backyard and make sure that it can't be seen. He doesn't want to see the neighbors either, you know, so it's one of those things that I think you'll look at with every, you know, it's hard to say with a broad stroke that, you know, we're setting a precedent because, you know, there is a reason we're here and a reason we're asking for this and a reason to mitigate. And that's pretty much what we're hoping to do.
That's why, from my, from my personal perspective, given the large size of the property, that if there was a comparison table with all of the other lots, you know, there's ones that are one acre and they're probably stuck with half-acre development coverage numbers, I would think. But I don't know what the ratios are because I don't, I wasn't here for this. And so if there's a mechanism that goes along that way, this, we could say, is equivalent to, I don't know, is this two-acre zoning over here?
Yes.
You're part of it? Okay, so you have 2.45 acres equivalent.
Oh, three, yeah, yep.
Okay, so it's, 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 I'm sorry, 45, it's a, it's 0.99 or 92 extra. And I could see that, that that would allow something. If you said, well, okay, if you did the straight path, you could have another 0.46. But I would say, no, you can only have 0.23 because whatever we change, we make it, you can't have it all. But something that allows flotation, and I don't know how to do that because I don't know how this thing was set up.
Well, why don't, why don't we do this? Without going through additional drawings and sketches and more money, perhaps with these sketches, we schedule a meeting, go out to the site.
Yep.
Take a look.
If you don't mind.
And do it that way. And see if we can't identify in the field what we, what we see out here.
I totally agree and, and there's no need to do anything.
We'll just use these.
Yeah, because if you lay out cookies and iced tea and all that, now we have to calculate, does it go over the $3.22 we're allowed? You know, so don't, don't bother with that.
Do you want to schedule that sidewalk today?
Pardon?
Tonight, today? Schedule the sidewalk?
Yeah, I think we should.
Thank you.
Are the two houses east of Hammond below you or above you?
Way above.
Way above.
They're up on the ridge.
Okay.
From the, from the house on the left there.
Speak in the mic, please.
Sorry, from the house on the left there in the dead, first of all, as you know, these Google Earth.
A pointer.
Oops, sorry, just gave it back.
So these are, this is forest. This is forest, you know, these are, these are massive trees that are fully, you know, green today, so you literally can't see. But this house here has these major rock abutments, if I'm saying it right.
Outcrops.
Outcrops, sorry. That block their entire first floor from literally seeing past that rock. So you have to be on the second floor in this end of the house in the winter to be able to see over to here. And this house, as you can see, this is the garage over here. The house itself is facing this way. So this house doesn't even visually have a viewpoint to this entire backyard and side yard, which is, again, something you'll see on a site visit.
Okay, great. So what looks good for folks, what's, what's a good time?
Saturday morning.
Anytime except Father's Day.
Okay. Are we available for this Saturday? Would that work?
I am.
June, is that June 2nd?
June 2nd.
Yep, 2nd.
Yeah, I can do that.
What time?
Is that okay, Greg?
Early, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, early.
Nine, nine o'clock.
Okay.
That's good.
So we'll see you there.
So, so are you prepared to tentatively schedule a public hearing on this for June 20th? Do you, you know, after your sidewalk, if they, if you want to come back and discuss the application, dare I say, June 5th? I don't think we have room on June 5th.
I didn't hear what you said, I don't.
So maybe come back on June 5th if you feel you need to. Otherwise, tentatively, public hearing pending your outcome of your sidewalk or even tentatively scheduling a July 17th public hearing. Because remember, you are not meeting in August and we're struggling in September.
And Greg, you're not here on the 20th of June?
Correct.
Well.
Just throwing that out there for.
I think we should try to schedule for a public, frankly.
And you'll do a great presentation.
Want to try the 20th?
It's up to the board.
Is that okay, even though you're not here?
Yeah.
I'll phone in.
And I'll walk around on the weekend and give comments to you guys.
Okay.
I can meet you anytime, if Mitchell's working, if you want.
No, he's going to be there for a second, it's just here. Here.
Yeah, we'll see you on Saturday.
Yeah, we'll see you Saturday and we'll schedule a public in for June 20th.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you again and appreciate the consideration.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
You're trying and we're trying. And the trick is not to be trying to the other person.
Okay, we move now to our next item. This is an informal hearing for a new application. This is Snyder, application for preliminary subdivision plat amendment for a lot line change, 254 Hamilton Road.
Do you want me to review my comments or kind of describe the project for you? So this is a lot line change. It involves two land transfers. One land transfer is a 0.138 acre transfer. The other is a 0.001 acre transfer, two different locations on the lot. One of the lots is developed, the other lot is not developed. The, one lot currently has an existing non-conforming rear yard setback, which will come into conformance with the lot line adjustment. Both, the existing tax lot is compliant with, with the coverage requirements, so there's no exceedance. There is no development proposed on the second lot, but there is a development plan that was submitted showing potential areas of septic system and a development envelope for the proposed new house if one is to be built. That demonstrates that the lot line change does not affect setbacks on the undeveloped lot. There are no wetlands or wetland buffers present on the property. There are some steep slopes on the property and this action is considered a type 2 action in accordance with SECR.
Okay, good. Bob?
Basically, number one, I just had some recommended wording for the subdivision plat to clarify what was there and what it's going to be. And number two, I don't know if it's a big deal, I wrote it to the board's attention. Evidently, the way they drew the property line, it goes over a existing pond. I don't know whether you want to remove it or change the line. Might be more practical just to remove it if they could.
Is the pond large enough to qualify as a wetland? Does it trigger? No.
No, I wouldn't say that. Has to be more than a tenth of an acre.
Right, exactly.
I would say not. And number three, they should label the lots when they're subdivided finally. finally as either lots A or B, or lots one or two. That's it.
Big choice.
Right now, there's nothing, so you don't know what they are.
We could, we could fight about A, B, or one or two for a while, right?
A, B, or one or two.
Good, okay, thanks. Yep.
Hi, it's Kurt Snyder. I just want to make one comment. The pond is just a rubber liner, one-foot ornamental that I could pull up tonight if I had to.
And you just indicated on the plat to be removed.
Right, thank you.
Okay, great. And again, this is just to bring a non-conforming lot into conformance. We had one, I think we did see a letter here from someone, a neighbor, and this is from 254 Hamilton Drive, I guess a neighbor, and some concern about stormwater. But again, there's no development that's being proposed here, so that would be something that would be looked at in the future if there were ever a proposed development on-
That's correct.
Lot one or two, or B or A.
A or B, one or two.
Right, okay. All right. Is this also, Jennifer, something that if we so desire that we could waive jurisdiction and move forward? Okay?
If we waived jurisdiction, can we still nonetheless stipulate that the little ornamental pond should be removed?
Yeah.
Or relocated.
Relocated. That would take two days.
Okay. Is there a desire to waive jurisdiction on it? It doesn't seem to be a matter of any particular moment.
Motion to waive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And do we have to do anything after that, Jennifer?
Um, a resolution.
Resolution? Okay. But basically, it's as close as you can get to one-stop shopping here?
[laughing]
You did it. You broke the record.
So, we can schedule the resolutions to be prepared for the June 20th meeting?
Right, terrific. Okay. Yep. Okay, we have two quick things. We have a request for an extension for Goran John Nickic, the Brandywine subdivisions, lots five, six, seven, and eight. My understanding is that there are no objections from staff for legal on this, that it's, they're working along, but they just need some extra time.
Correct.
They're very close.
Pardon?
They're very close.
They're very close? Okay.
Good.
Is this the site where you got a lot of noise complaint, letters or something?
No, that's another one.
Is that the rock crushing?
That's Kerry.
Kerry.
Kerry Lane. That's Beloit. Next week. Stay tuned.
That's next week, yes.
Geez, I missed it. I should be answering.
Uh, is there a motion to grant the extension that's requested?
So, move.
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have a request on the Citron subdivision. This is the one for the development on the site itself. And I guess they're getting close on this one also, Bob, from what I understand?
Uh, yes. Not as quite as Nickic, but they are trying their best.
Five on a scale of 10, something like that? One or two, or A or B? Okay. But again, no objections, no problems with the extension?
I don't have a problem.
Okay. Is there a motion then to grant the extension sought by the applicant?
Motion?
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, that concludes the business portion of the, of the entertainment tonight. So, we're going to talk about Chappaqua hamlet. Jennifer's going to leave, so we have to be on good behavior voluntarily.
Thank you.
Take two.
Take two. It's a long trip, come on.
Don't you have kids?
And your kids!
And your kids will want them.
Your kids will, they'll never sleep, though.
They'll be up till midnight.
Bouncing off the walls, yep.
See you later.
Good night.
Yeah, they might not.
Bob, I have something up here to sign.
Do you have a note to sign it?
Uh, yes. That might be- 480 Bedford.
Oh.
I hope we heard this application at some point.
You heard that application many times.
Oh, this is the pipe-
Yes.
For chapel crossing.
Yes.
Oh, I'll sign it later. Just show me where.
I did that last week, I forgot.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yes, you are taking it.
This, portions of this is a little bit squashed. I wonder if that's going to affect the drawings. We'll have to see. Okay.
Where's Greg? He left already?
I put this slide up here, and I spent a little bit of time trying to get the language right. Because when these things, when these things, things like this get shown, often because it's going to be very specific looking with regard to buildings and land assemblage and public improvements, and people, quite rightly, tend to take it as a, a real plan, drawings like this, images like this, as though this is something that some is ready to go out and build. And I want to be very, very sure that everybody understands that I did this on my own, and there was a conversation with the town board a couple of weeks ago on the subject of, has been ongoing one, on zoning, rezoning for the, in particular right now, the Chappaqua hamlet, in furtherance of the policies that have been essentially legislated within the new comprehensive plan. And what's the next step, and how do you, where do you go, and how do you go to see if you can manifest those things? And I made the case that I thought that maybe it's time to just do some images, which are going to look very architectural, very specific, but they are images only to represent the policies that are in the master plan. They are not in any way intended to represent an actual, an actual plan itself. So, this is in this material. If this material goes any further than this meeting, this has to go with it, so that people understand that this is not a plan for Chappaqua hamlet. And I'm going to read this, just so that it gets into the record. What it is, is a first look at the discussions of how do we manifest, quote, "How do we manifest the policies in the comprehensive plan for the revitalization of the Chappaqua hamlet?" Although these images apply specific investments of pub, imply, specific investments of public funds, private investment, or property assemblage, a true plan for the revitalization of Chappaqua hamlet can only be prepared through a process of technical analysis, market opportunity, development feasibility, and public review. These images are prepared merely as a visualization tool in the very first steps. It's intended to scope, size, distribution, and uses of everything represented in these images will evolve during that process. These images investigate applications of North Greeley Street only, and are not intended to preclude or exclude initiatives elsewhere in Newcastle. So, let's see if I can operate.
I like it.
It's, I don't know.
Looks awesome.
I don't know how to, yeah, that's it. We're done.
Good job.
Taking my brownies and going home.
The only suggestion I have is to make the knot twice as big.
I will.
A little bit bolder, and a little bit-
And redder.
I just, because I, I know, sorry?
I said, a little bit bolder.
I just, you know what can happen with this.
Oh, absolutely. I, I agree with you 100%. And I appreciate you reading it into the record. Very much so.
I think you could actually read in now some of the secondary impacts if we actually take this, like, you know, death and all the other diseases that we might get.
Martin's in the room.
Okay, so, to that end, I thought it was a pretty good idea to put down what I thought were the, the policies that would apply to the hamlet. And it's not every policy in the master plan, in the comprehensive plan, because there are ones that have to do parks and open space and drainage, and all those things are equally important. But these are the ones that would, I believe, apply to anything that one might do in terms of improvements in the hamlet. And the objective mixed-use multifamily housing, these I think are the sub, the subcategories for all of these things, retail, entertainment. We talked about, I think, programmable public space, space that can be used, fitness recreation, mobility, infrastructure, sanitary sewer efficiencies in, in infrastructure, destination place-making. This is something that we talked a lot about, is what really is going to be, could be, should be, might be, the opportunities for a future that go beyond just going to shop to, to buy something. And the notion that retailers are going to be challenged, and are being challenged by the internet and internet shopping, and as a consequence, people no longer go places necessarily to shop. They go places to do something or to be somewhere. And as a consequence, that somewhere has to be somewhere. And that's something that maybe should be explored with regard to, with regard to Chappaqua. And the elements that would apply to that is that you need to have public spaces. You want to have a specific imagery that says this is this special place, attractive uses, and an identity. And then, streetscape is all-important all the time. And that's not just how it looks, but how it works. The old idea of complete streets, I think that's the right term I'm learning.
Uh-
Is that called complete streets?
Complete streets is more of the, the integration of uses within the, within the roadway.
Within the roadway itself.
Within the roadway yourself.
So, like bike lanes and so on?
I think your idea of not only the way it looks, but how it functions-
Right.
Is probably the better term.
Very good. Let me see if I'm getting this right. I don't know how to... There. So, I just thought I'd start with, I just thought I'd start with a little bit of, sort of, there is actually a challenge here. This is, there are towns that are quite naturally work as townscapes, and there are others that have a heavier lift. The ones that work as, as townscapes usually have a natural crossroads, usually have a, that development centers around, the town function center around. And there's, there are some specific challenges that Chappaqua has that, that relate to the fact that we have a through road, which is a state road, which is really a highly trafficked at certain times a day through roadway, that are, we have a condition in this case where up to the right, as you go up King Street, you essentially are climbing and leaving the town. If you come back down, as you come down King Street, to come to the center of town, there is really, other than a little bit of parking here and back here, there is really just a short stretch of road here. And there is really not much of a destination here, with perhaps the exception of Susan Lawrence and some other secondary. I know that there's a drugstore back up here. But it's really, the energy of the whole move is come down. You have a free left. You almost feel compelled to make that left to get through the intersection. And then, before you know it, you're here, and you are in the process of leaving town. And there is, typically, when you come into towns, you come to a location, you come to a destination, and then from there, you go out of town. From there, you go to, but here, you're really, the movements, both this one and this one, are set up as traffic movements, not destination movements. There are other considerations, just to get them all on one drawing. The hill, going up the hill, this really is, it's not technically a dead end, but there's really not enough here to draw you here. There is, I mean, you'll go there, but there, it's really not much of a town from here to here. We've already talked about this move. It's a one-sided shopping street here with, in, which is essentially mostly in a traffic intersection. And then, I call this a mystery avenue. North Greeley is, there's really, there's really not a lot up there that takes you up there. It's not as though there aren't property owners and there aren't tenants up there. But there are really no real destinations up there. And there just isn't a lot of, there aren't a lot of people that appear to go up there, other than to go to Susan Lawrence and some of the closer-end businesses which are in this area here. There's really not much to draw you up there, other than perhaps the post office.
You know what? The, the parking and the narrowness of the road, you could, you could easily change the name of that avenue by taking the T out.
Mr. I will do that. So, here are just some thoughts about what might happen here. And some of these things are, are, we've talked about, on this board, we've talked about a couple of these things already, and the, and made recommendations to the town board. For instance, turning this into a T intersection in order to come to a destination, come to a main street.
Mr. Curly, if I may, New York State DOT turned that down. The town board worked very hard to try and get that into a T intersection, and due to the grades and the elevations, and New York State DOT would not allow it.
I didn't, okay, I didn't know that. We, I didn't get that feedback.
No. No, when the one, well, when-
DOT wanted to do that.
Right, but when we-
When I first got here in 93, Frank and I spent an enormous amount of time developing plans-
Yes.
To submit to the board, to make that a T intersection.
DOT changes with the-
Right, and, and it's part of the streetscape revitalization that is occurring right now, the infrastructure and streetscape. The town board revisited that intersection-
Remember that.
And tried to make it a T, and we had pushback from DOT about making that a T intersection.
Okay, I wasn't aware that you got pushback. I was just told that the town board decided that he didn't want to do it. So, they got pushback.
It was in 93.
No, actually, I just want to clarify that, because-
The town board didn't want to, but now the town did.
We got pushed back from the town board, yeah.
Yeah. No, it's kind of going back and forth.
Is that the town was going to present the DOT with that teardrop plan, that sort of modified.
Modified.
So, did they turn down the teardrop, or did they turn down a T intersection?
They did both.
They turned down both?
Well, you know, frankly, I, I don't think that that, that's, that's interesting to know. And again, as I said before, the DOT's all over the place on this.
Correct.
They, they wanted the T, when we didn't want the T back in the early 90s. They're all over the place. And the bottom line is, if, if this is something that we want, there are mechanisms to go through this.
Correct.
If we all, as a community, decide this is what we want to do. We want to have function instead of dysfunction.
Yes.
This is something that we should move forward, toward, toward. And I think that there's enough clout in this community to, to get that message out to DOT, to the people who talk to DOT. And so, I, I mean, this is obviously just a conceptual program, but-
Right.
Uh, we, I don't think that we should bounce back and say, this year's version of the DOT doesn't like this. They want to do the roundabout. They want to do the teardrop. They want to do, they're taking away the, the turns now. This year, that's out of fashion. I think we should go for something that makes the most sense long-term, and then deal with the bureaucrats later on.
So, again, these, this, this particular segment of this diagram, it's not even a plan, this diagram, is, I think, I think it's important for the overall, I think, important for the overall development and revitalization of the town. But it's not the focus of this presentation, okay? The focus of this presentation is more up here in North Greeley. This is intended to suggest that there is, that this would be a continuation of something that could be improved through here as well. Oh, sorry. So, I need to go back one. Forgive me. I'm not used to this machine. Got it. So, one of the things that would be important to do here is that there is this feeling, I think, that there really is, you come here and you zoom through here, and there, it really lacks the feeling of a, to me anyway, of a destination, a place you're coming to. And a typical device that have been, has been, is used everywhere, is a notion of some sort of a town square, village green, some sort of an identity place that you come to and from which the town radiates. And it occurs to me, the place that this should happen is at the foot of King Street, right at this intersection, and which would be an asset to any new developments that, and redevelopment of North Greeley, that this would be the focus of, of the hamlet right here. And that becomes, as a consequence, a very important piece of property. We're going to see some sketches here that suggest that there would need to be some kind of public action that might do some land purchase, some facilitation of redevelopment that would open up an open space in this location in order to make a destination here, in order not just to make a destination, but to make an, an identity-giving location to the hamlet that then you could load with the kinds of architectural imagery, public space imagery, that would say that this is different from Peak Skill, this is different from Pleasantville, this is, this is different from Millwood, this is, in fact, Chappaqua.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I understand the diagram, and I agree with you about the necessary for a town scrub. square. Of those four, of that force, of the four intersection, of the four corners, is there a reason why you picked that corner? Or you just picked any old corner?
I picked that corner because it, well, you know, it could be any gold corner. No, you're right, it could be any old corner. I did pick this corner because I thought that the, as you come down the hill, opening up this corner, because this is the predominant move anyway, it always will be, having this corner as the focal point for those moves, I thought, was a good idea. There's no reason conceptually, Greg, you're right, where it couldn't, why it couldn't be here, here, or here. When you get into those things, you begin to sort of look at, you know, property owners and existing architecture and so on, existing buildings.
I was just wondering if there was a line of sight or, but, okay.
No. The only other thing that is going to apply that maybe should be in consideration is that the parking lot, which is right here, is town property.
Yes.
And the proximity of that town property to a piece of land which has tenants on it and landowners on it, begins to open up the opportunity for some sort of a...
Public.
A swap of some kind, some sort of a land transactional deal of some kind. Doesn't mean it couldn't happen anywhere else, but that's what occurred to me, is one of the reasons why.
And I agree with both of you. And one of the other benefits, though, that coming in this direction, that this restaurant here has outdoor seating, this one does too, and the Japanese restaurant a little bit, and over here you have, Susan Lawrence has some outside tables. It's tougher to get the activity here if you're going to build it here. Now, if you built town square here, you could change the whole thing, make this maybe not a dead-end street. So there's a whole bunch of things that come out, but depending on where it is, then you should put the pros and cons.
Right.
Someday, someone should do that and say, okay, here's what you got and what you could do.
And you hit on a very important point, is having restaurants with activity and dining on a town square, there's a lot of people watching, and it gets people coming, and there's vibrance from that, and energy that's generated from that. So I think those are all good points to be referencing.
So what this begins to set one up for is the notion that, and again, this is only focused on the North Greeley corridor. It does not mean that this kind of initiative, any kind of activity couldn't also happen or instead happen anywhere else in town. This just happens to be focused here. And the natural, it seems to me that with the existing uses and existing buildings and existing topography, there is a natural plateau that sits in here, really valley, it's not a plateau, it's the lowland, that sits in here, which one could designate for just the purposes of tonight, as its own improvement district that the town can focus on, and say, we are going to use our resources to figure out what we could do here in order to manifest the policies and the master plan for revitalizing the hamlet. And here's that town parking lot as a town parcel. One of the things that's important about the geometries here, the vertical geometries, is that there's a line right here, which essentially is a ten-foot retaining wall. There is a very sharp change in grade from here to here. This district up here has residences, has, there's an office building in here, there are restaurants up in here, but it's all about ten feet higher along this line than what you see in this shaded in white area. And that, we're going to see, that gives us, I think, an op, one, an opportunity to use that topography to advantage, and also just creates a natural boundary for investments and development initiatives. So now, getting to land use real quick, and again, on the right-hand side, I've recalled those policy initiatives, those objectives in the master plan, and one of them is housing. And I think it's properly one of the big ones. I think that it's a good thing to do for the town, and I also, and there's a feeling of social responsibility here, which I think is admirable. But I also think that this is one of the uses that you can really use to revitalize the hamlet. You get people down here, when you get people down here, you get businesses down, you get, maybe not more businesses, but you get healthier businesses. So getting enough housing in here and getting as much housing in here as you can reasonably get in is not such a bad idea. Then retail, obviously, we want to get more retail, get some ground floor retail under housing, get retail wherever you can, but I think you need to be careful because if you put too much retail in here, you, there's a chance you're going to be, if not be building vacant space here, you might be causing retail vacancies elsewhere in town. There's only so much that you can, that you can build and that will be, I think, financially viable. It's almost better that you not have enough retail than you have too much. So in this particular plan and this idea, the retail is located closer to the intersection down here and to where the rest of the retail is. And housing then occupies most of the farther, the northern end of the road.
So as an observation, it seems to me that that would necessitate a change in current zoning in the business district, because now, any new construction with housing must have retail on the ground floor, then housing above it. So it's just an observation. Obviously, it's something that can be done legislatively, but it's an observation that would be one of the tasks that needs to be explored in order to move forward with anything even remotely close to this.
Then there, there needs to be more than, I believe, there should be, if there can be, more than just shops and housing here. We need to find a way to make destinations down here. And there was, I remember when we talked about Chappaqua Crossing and the health facility there, the fitness facility, and there were conversations about, gee, can you put a swimming pool in there? The high school doesn't have one to call their own, the town doesn't have one to call its own. And a swimming pool, excuse me, would be, I think, a really terrific way to get people down here. You get the swim teams down here, you get people swimming athletically in the morning and in the evening, you know, before and after work. You get swim classes, you get elderly swim times. It's a way to get a lot of people down here, almost 24/7, which I think helps activate and causes the viability of other uses like cafes and restaurants. And so there is room to put a swim center in here, a community pool, six-lane, 25-meter pool, I think you could get in here. There are obviously immediately questions about who pays for this and all of that, which I think probably could be managed, but it seems to me something like that would be good to have, that has those qualities associated with it. So you then, lastly, but really importantly, need to be sure you're making that street a viable, attractive, functioning street, which is, our streets are actually our most used public spaces. We tend to see them as just corridors just to go through, but they are actually public spaces and they contribute to the quality of a community. In this particular case, I think it's really important that one gets that right and makes it a pleasant public space. So you put it all together with maybe some secondary open spaces in addition to the town square, so that the street itself is activated by other secondary open spaces that serve these other uses. And you end up with, I think, development numbers that were something like what you see on the left. This is really, don't take these as hard numbers, this is just somebody sitting down and adding up floor space. There is a lot that goes into this, market demand, the environmental consequences of what might be being proposed here, building heights, people may not want three-story buildings, maybe two-story buildings, there's just so much that goes into these numbers. But I think it's important to put something out there so that people begin to understand the order of magnitude that we could be talking about. Now, how does this all work? Here's a, here's a much more specific version of all of that, and it's so specific that it can be a little bit frightening. But let me just remind everybody that this is just lines on a page, it's just something to start a conversation. So I'm going to go through this relatively quickly and walk you through what is on these, in these drawings, to give you, one, a sense of the feeling of density, the feeling of activity hopefully, the feeling of the quality of space that I think that we would be wanting to build, and as something to look forward to, as something that, not in this particular version necessarily, but something of this nature, or it might be worth working towards, see if we can achieve what the master plan is asking for. So it looks like these, yeah, it looks like these images have been stretched, but it is what it is. So on the right, and there's a handy-dandy little key here, shows you where your viewpoint is in all these drawings. This would be the town square here, this is the street, improves in North Greeley. Residential, ground floor retail, retail around the, around the town square, a residential muse at this end, a little public green space here, related, serving this neighborhood, more residential here, and some sort of a swim center facility here. So coming down Greeley, again, here's this little handy-dandy thing, coming down Greeley, and again, Greg, this is part of the thinking here, you come down Greeley on your right, you would find a way to open up this frontage so you can actually look into the square, but also have facilities that are on the street to activate the corner. This could be a two-story, this is so conjectural, so don't take it, take it with a grain of salt. But some of the qualities, I think, might be important to find, to build into something down here if we can. And the qualities of this building would be a two-story space, two-story building, which might be a restaurant, upper level, you could have entertainment, it'd be a dining upstairs as well. In the weather, you open it up and you can look down on the square and get some feeling of... And as you come further down, again, we're still on North King, the North, on King, the North Greeley intersection is right here going that way. Looking deeper into the space now, little coffee shop on the corner, there's that restaurant there, you could walk into the space here, you could look into the space, and that then becomes in there, that becomes the town square, with some sort of iconic architecture, I just pick whatever kinds of thing everybody's happy with, which is some sort of a clock tower iconography, I don't, it doesn't matter at this point what it is or isn't, but that there might be something there to sort of create an identity for the square and a sense of, a sense of place. So now, we've turned the corner, and we're on North Greeley, we're here, and we're looking into the square. And at the other end of the square, I'm going to show you a blow-up of the square in a minute so you can see how it works, but now you can look deep into the square and perhaps at the other end of the square, well, there would be retail at the other end of the square, and maybe there's a, some sort of an architecture here which makes a presentation of the square, could be a stage for entertainment as well, in addition to entrance into the shops back here. And it would be interesting, I think, important actually, I think, to see if we can, one can, in whatever happens, wherever it happens down here, find a place where the town can claim it as where all of the public things happen, or most of the public things happen, that are like the market day, right? The farmer's market could happen here, entertainment might happen here. It's a little bit unfortunate, I think, that the farmer's market happens in front of the train station because that's so separated from actually town, right? Heart of the town. That, and people go there, and it's a great market, nothing wrong with it, but it seems to me it doesn't really contribute its energy to the town itself. And maybe this would be the kind of place that that could happen, in addition to other things, you know, book fairs, the town can promote, find a way to promote the use of the space to help activate. And this is actually in the space looking back, probably shown enough of the space, but then in the space and looking back to the corner of King coming down and Greeley on the right. And I also thought that it might be interesting to get yet another use in here, and I have no idea whether there's a market for this, but some sort of a, of an inn, a small sort of boutique hotel that you could have on the square, on the upper floors, help activate the space again, and would help, and then on the ground floor down here, under it, you'd have retail. So it'd be retail all the way around the square with perhaps some offices above, dentists, et cetera, up above. And if you're going to have real estate offices, I think you'd prefer to put them, one would rather put them up instead of down. But in any event, and then on the second level here, perhaps the third level, you could have hotel in rooms that would also activate the space. And this piece of iconography could also be the one that identifies that hotel. So now, looking down the street, or up, sorry, North Greeley, you can, you understand all these elements here, and now we're looking this way, we're going to go down the street. Oh, sorry, back to square, enough of the square. So there's a view of the street, and in this scheme, the notion is that there is retail on the ground floor of residential, at least for a portion of this. Maybe it's appropriate to go all the way, I don't have any idea. I think you definitely want to go at least this far. Whether the market will support going all the way is another question. I kind of worry about going that far. But if you go this far, you've at least gone as far as where the swimming pool is, this is very active. So this portion of the street can actually work, I think, quite well, Susan Lawrence is here, I believe that's... So this is actually quite active from a retail sort of public use point of view. And then in apartment building, this is drawn as an apartment building, with its lobby here, and you go up to then, probably in this scheme, it's a center hall apartment building, two floors here, three here, that then is accessed by a lobby back on to the, to the main street. This is a view now focusing on the retail, already talked enough about that, and on the street, it might look something like that. And it, again, takes you down to, the lobby for the retail is here. Again, this is all walkable to the train station, so I think that that also helps activate the street. I should have taken it out, that's redundant, but again, it's the same view. And if you go down that street, you eventually come to the lobby of the apartment building. And what happens beyond the lobby on the ground floor is, in this scheme, not retail, but is, there are ground floor residential units, and rather than these being center hall units that you access from inside the building, because there's parking behind here, these are essentially little studio units that are accessed from the street. So this would be, in this plan, this would be sort of a condominium green, right? And it would be maintained and shared by the apartment building in general, but these are all accessing the street, these are a series of doors that take you to this residential street for these units that are here. Keep going down, and you get to, now we're here in the plan, and you get to a muse, which then gives you maybe the opportunity to do some townhouse units, they could be one apartment below and two floors above. I had a house like that when I lived in Capitol Hill, made it affordable, is sort of a starter home. And this then becomes a focal point, amenity focal point for all the residential of the street, but also gives a little bit of relief to this street, which is coming essentially to a dead end at a big post office here. So this provides a destination and some amenity at the very end. And why not, in this square, we're all so happy to have chicken coops? Put a chicken coop in the middle of it, there are the chickens, you only get two here, that everybody can share, the kids can share. And I, this is only partially tongue-in-cheek, actually, I think that it's really, really important to figure out what to do with our open spaces that make them really special and make them unique to our town. This is just one idea, but whatever it might be, I think that one should work to do that. Retailers do this, merchandisers do this, people who build shopping malls do this, they figure out what identity they want to have, and they make an investment in it, and they make an investment in not just building it, but maintaining it and then promoting it. And they make an investment in not just building it, but maintaining it and then promoting it. This is maybe not the right thing, but it's, it's the notion of an idea that perhaps we ought to be looking at doing something. So now we're on the other side, on, back on this side of the street, and we're looking at the other side of the street where the swim center is, more residential. And at this end, opposite the square, residential square we were just in, is a green space, which is a place to have a catch with your son, to take your kid, children to play. It's not that big, doesn't have to be that big for the uses. You don't necessarily want to say, well, we have to have a ball field here, this is an urban village situation. But you do need some green space. And it seems to me that this would be a place that you could do it on land that you otherwise probably aren't gonna find a use for. So now looking down, again, now we're across the street and here's that park again. And looking back down towards the intersection of North Greeley and King, you'll see on the right some more townhouse type units in this particular version of a plan. And they could be, again, these could be just single homes, single family homes, or they could be apartments on the ground floor, apartment on the ground floor, two up. This is just one version of what it could be, it doesn't even have to be anything like this. It's just one version of what it could be. And each one of these, actually, this is not condominium space, these, these are front yards, private front yards that are owned by these units. And I haven't rendered it that way, but each one of these could take on its own character the way it, these things are done in, in typical neighborhoods, which would give a variety and a little bit more residential character to the street. And then you go a little bit further and you come to the swimming center, the swim center. And again, this would be another location for an open space, you come out of the swim center. Your kids wait for you to pick them up, you meet your friends here. While the, while the children are swimming, the parents, the mothers, the parents, the fathers, sit on the bench and have a cup of coffee. It's another focal point, which I just called it the Dolphin Swim Center because I wanted to put a dolphin on the street. So there he is, it's obviously a statue. But again, it's one of those things, you make an effort to give your spaces an identity and then go for it. And then people say, oh, I'll meet you at the dolphin. And it becomes part of the town, you know, thirty years from now, forty years now, it's part of the street town. Remember when, we used to go to the dolphin, right? So, and they, these things are really not hard to do, it just takes a little bit of attention, is all. So there's the swim center. And now we're looking back at the street. And you can see generally how that would fit in to the street. And again, the retail in this scheme stops about here, this is a very active place. So this becomes now a very active, I believe could be, a very active part of the street with the retail and all the residential coming and going back to the center of town and going to the train station. And there's the overall perspective from, looking from above on King, looking back. And I'm showing this view because the first thing, the next thing people wanna know is where's all the parking, right? So this would be one of those things, Sabrina, where one would have to, the town would have to say, okay, we're going to have a parking district here and it's gonna work like this. And we're gonna work with the developers in order to be sure it gets put in place the right way. The town will make a particular contribution, I don't know what it would be, maybe they don't have to. But in order to get this kind of thing to work, you need to have that kind of comprehensive treatment, I think, of parking. And the way it works here, you'll see this wall here in this drawing is a ten-foot wall. But that's because this is a Google Earth flat photograph. These buildings are actually above, at the top of that wall. And they are, in this scheme, they are actually at the same level as the level of this parking garage. None of these buildings or cars enter from there. But they are not impacted by looking at the back of a, they're above it, so they have light and air. There are a couple here which are a little tricky, but not many. So now we're on top of that parking deck. And the back of the parking deck could also be landscaped, because these are units here, looking out, right? And then this is parking and it could also be landscaped to make it the, more of an amenity rather than. And what you're seeing here are ramps that are going down. And the way you access these, this parking, the parking deck is back here now, is below, there's an entrance way here. There, there's a ramp here, a ramp here, and there's an entrance over here. And you gotta figure out, one has to figure out how to zone this, but it seems logical to me that the upper deck would be for residences. And the ground floor parking, right through here, would be for the retail. And would be for the, for the swimming pool. And so one would be coming in, and there's also street parking here. I forget how many cars, I got fifty cars, I think, street parking in this scheme. So the parking would be handled essentially in a parking structure. But it would be close enough so that it serves, could serve all of these uses in here. So, there it is. And again, recalling all of those objectives of the master plan, or there again, and, the comp plan, sorry. And some imagery and I have to stress, there'll be one more time, we'll look at this. Or another version of this, if you guys have comments, you'd like to change it. And that'll be, because we have the invitation of the town board to show it to them.
This is your preview.
And then I, I would expect never to see this drawing again. Because we don't, it, it will not be useful beyond, right, that meeting. It's just to provoke a conversation and to say, yes. I could see people saying, oh my gosh, that is way too much, that's much more than we thought that we needed this town to be.
Tom, can you go back to your number slide?
The number slide?
Like where you had on the left side, you had how many houses, the density.
Yeah, I'll find that. They may say, you know, it's just too big a project for us to take on. They may say, there are too many property owners to assemble this property. And it may turn out that, gee, there were wishes in the, in the, in the master, in the comp plan, but they're not actually needs, they're not something that we have to do for the town to survive, all of it. And so it's, it's where it gets to the point of how much do you, does one want to do and how much does one have to do? And to me, that's a threshold question. This would be the farthest reach, I think, of what one would do here. There's not much left you can do than what's been done here, you're not gonna do a ten-story building, right?
Unless you dig down very deep.
It's pretty wet.
And so, I'm almost there, Sabrina, there it is.
Yes, thank you.
So again, don't take these numbers to the bank.
No, 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 just to get a sense.
It's a general idea.
You see the caveat at the bottom.
How, what do you guys feel?
I like it, I think it's got a lot of openness to it, it, it brings more people. You know, the village, the town square center could be catching the overflow of sales days, you know, things like that, that just sort of makes more people wanna come and easily, more easily park. You know, as, as Tom said, it could be a, it could be a place where there's music in the summer. You know, it would be in competition with Chappaqua Park, but that could all be worked out.
They're two different venues.
Yeah, right.
Two different types of events.
Yeah.
Yeah, typically. Well, they had a country singer there this weekend, so it's, you know, it's that.
Were you there?
No, how'd he go?
How'd he do?
Huh, well, it would've been easier, I think, there were only fifty people.
So is there, is there eighty-three thousand square feet of resi or is the eleven inside the seventy-two?
Oh, no, the town subset is what is on, in this diagram, is on the town-owned property.
On the town, so then this is together, so these are two.
This, this, this is a subset of that.
That's okay, so that's in that one, okay.
But this is the town property.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, you might wanna call it town property or town parcel.
Right, good point.
So when you have figures for parking of two-seventy and one-fifty, the one-fifty at the bottom is a subset of the.
It's part of the two-seventy.
Part of the two-seventy. But I, I think this is really commendable, Tom. I mean, it's, you've, you've taken a really hard look at the comp plan and identified goals, wishes that came up frequently in the, in the public conversations.
Their goals.
And then were incorporated into the plan. And you've, you know, envisioned something that brings life to a part of the town that lacks a cohesiveness in its current and, and lacks a pull down there, as you were saying, not to, not to be critical of anything that's down there. Because I go down that street frequently. One of the things I especially liked is the way you conceived the residential, which is, which accommodates a lot of different varieties of configurations of, of living and family. You know, you, you have some that are, like, could be a whole house. You have some that could be small apartments, some that could be larger apartments. No doubt there could be affordable and workforce worked into that equation. And people talk about, you know, a pool. I mean, I haven't heard a lot about it lately, but it sure has been something that's come up a lot over the years. The, the desirability of having a town pool, although I don't know what the economics, the, the numbers of running a town pool, but you know, it's concept, so we don't have to talk about any of the, the hard numbers at this point. And, you know, the open spaces, the, for the inn, the restaurants, the musical events, the farmer's market.
Well, it, it does what I think the task was that was sort of assigned. And that was articulate now with a sketch, those things that we've been talking about. Move the conversation now to the three-dimensional, the conceptual. We can play with it, move it around, et cetera, but it's moving it to the next level. And it seems to me it captures the elements that are critical that we saw in the comprehensive plan, that we heard from all the people. Does it hit every single one? No, not necessarily, does it emphasize some or others? We've worked that out.
One small area couldn't hit every single goal.
Of course not.
Like you say, Tom, you still have to discover what, what the threshold is for the, the intensiveness of the use of that property. Maybe that's too intensive, maybe, maybe it can be accommodated, all of it, but.
But it, I, I will say it's a fantastic job at taking the goals, the various goals, the, the, the elements within each of those goals that it does hit and visualizing them. And visualizing them in a means that's three stories. You know, that, that is three stories. And, you know, we have buildings down on Lower King Street which are four stories, potentially five stories.
Yeah, but five-foot ceilings, right?
Well, well, if you, if you look at them, I, I mean, if you look at the number of floors in them, there are a couple of them, they're right up against the tracks, but they are there. They're four-story buildings.
One, one building is a four-story building.
Yeah, I mean, but it, it puts it in perspective. And, and so, but, you know, understanding how the public commented on the comprehensive plan and what they said, and now seeing this as an example of that, I think is remarkable. I think it will really start the conversation.
Yeah, I think it's really exciting because it, it starts to, and I think it's so important, bring that whole concept that Tom emphasized on destination. It's got to be a reason for people to live here, to be here, to come here and not just be here, just activate and work around like ants within the hamlet, but bring people into the hamlet as opposed to it's a place to get through. And, and I, I think that's really exciting because I think no matter what we do here, we can make sidewalks bigger, wider, smaller, steeper, brick, concrete, whatever you want, lighting, all this kinda stuff. At some point, we have to have a destination. As we look around all the towns that have been successful, villages and cities, this is what we're seeing. I mean, this is not, you know, with all due respect, it's not rocket science, but.
No, it's not.
It's, it's been around a long time and.
And I'm not a rocket scientist.
So, but it's, it's, look around, this is what we see, this is what Stanford's done, what Derschel's doing and what other smaller towns have done, Scarsdale's done. You know, there's a reason why people go downtown.
And this is not, this is not only what towns are trying to, the ways in which they may be trying to reshape their image. Developers will find a big piece of property and they'll build something like this new and whole. It's like building a town from the ground up. And there's a lot of that that's in Gathersburg, Maryland, I mean, there are lots of places, Princeton, New Jersey, lots of places where the development model for larger projects is essentially trying to be hamlet building, right? Not just doing housing, right, or doing office buildings. And they're doing that because they are financially very successful. And there's a reason they're successful is because people want it. And I, I, this is maybe a little bit pejorative and I don't mean it to be negative at all. But I've always felt that there are three things that are really important for people who live in Newcastle. One is the train station, and particularly in the Chappaqua School District. Two are the schools, and three is their neighborhood. They're missing something, there, there's something missing, which is their town. You know, the, the town, the, the place where we gather, the, the identity we bring to what we do together. And that's what, that's what towns are. Pleasantville, I believe, has it. There are investments going on right now on Washington Street in Pleasantville, right next to your office. There are residential buildings going up because people wanna live there. Peekskill, you know, Entertainment Peekskill, Tarrytown. All of those towns have something special and have, right, have an identity because they have those things. This may not be it, but it seems to me that if we're going to make investments in this town in the interest of the, of the comprehensive plan, which is the policy that's been legislated because the town has said that this is, that they wanna do something, I think that, that it needs to be, it should be put together with the elements that say, we are, not only have housing downtown, we not only have this, we not only have that, we actually have a special town, a special identity down in our hamlet. And again, it's not rocket science, drawing it's not rocket science. Putting it, actually building it is, can be a heavy lift.
Yeah, it might be rocket engineering.
And that's, you know, that's where the real work comes in with a lot of people figuring out what the right thing to do is and then how you, that's a whole nother conversation about how to get it done.
Okay, another minor thought or two, you know, just thinking about the town square with its shapes and everything, in the summertime, it could be a place that's an outdoor film center. You know, I've seen those.
Stillwood has one.
And, okay, good, and so there's one or two upstate.
Right.
And they, they can get by with, you know, just fifty people coming or something.
Absolutely.
And it's kinda fun, you have hot dogs sold there and ice cream and all that good stuff. And, you know, you set it up so there's a, maybe there's a fountain somewhere to go with the theme across the street type of thing.
Yeah, my, my son, it's just a sidebar here, if you'll forgive me. My son moved to Santa Domingo for a number of reasons a while ago. And he decided to start his own little, his own little tapas stand. And it turned out that.
Is that cultural appropriation?
In Santa Domingo, right? And it's just a little, it's like a little hole in the wall building. But he, 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 he got Netflix in to this tapas stand. And then he set up chairs outside and he projected Netflix on the wall of the building. And people in the community would come at night and they sit in the chairs and they buy some cervezas and they, they watched the movie.
Perfect. Yeah. Sounds good to me.
He didn't charge them anything, he was selling them beer. But every once in a while, the old guys would, would watch the movie and they'd say, yeah, that was a bad movie, I want my money back.
Only some old guys.
That was one of his ventures that he's, he's since moved on in life. But, but that's, it's, it's a community thing.
It is, yes.
So I guess what we'll do is on June five, our next time we meet, we have a meeting with the town board. So I guess we'll let you do your presentation again and.
And at the town board meeting, will the property owners be invited or?
Everyone's invited, it's a open discussion.
Was this sent to the public, I mean, to the private property owners?
This is the first time we've seen it.
Oh, okay.
It's really conceptual, again, to Tom's, you know, warning and everything else. There's so much that has to go on before you ever put a shovel into the ground in terms of property owner rights, tenant rights, environmental issues, my, my funding, my goodness. Finding the right developers. finding the right developers. But you've got to start somewhere. And I, I think, again, just putting this conceptually in box form, three-dimensional form, is really a great first step.
Getting back to the T-intersection in the state.
Yes.
So.
This is such a nice meeting.
A recourse does a community have to fight the state? Does it?
Yeah, it absolutely can. It would take a unified, yeah, it would take a unified front. I mean, if the entire planning board wants a T and the entire town board wants a T, it's a matter of meeting with higher-ups in DOT and really pressing for it. You know, DOT has gone through several different policy changes, different staff people retiring, new, you know, try and try again, so to speak. And, and I think having plans such as this, documents such as, you know, things that we can create to say, "We have bigger plans for our community. This intersection is really messing with that."
And they're the two of them together, the both intersections, because they just.
Correct.
Absolutely, yes.
I mean, a traffic engineer loves this.
Correct. Well, and I have.
It just moves traffic through town.
And I have to, you have to know that light, there's a light going in at the bottom of King Street, King and Greeley.
Good.
That was a push in and of itself by DOT because in their minds, they don't like to interrupt state highways. This is not a state highway in upstate New York, which is like a throughway through farm fields.
It's 120 and 117.
Those are all state.
And 134. They're all the same state highway, right?
Same authority.
They are, they are, they are classified as the same type of roadway in the state's eyes.
All those other roads are riddled with stoplights, too.
They, of course.
Wait a minute now. I think it's.
But here, they, they didn't want to subordinate their state road to Greeley Avenue, which is a town road or a county road.
Correct.
I think that's what the.
Well, maybe so, but.
But I mean, but so, that's a.
But another, another.
The push that, that got.
Well, years ago, they wanted to have the T-intersection with light.
Well, you go, go up Route twenty-two.
They wanted three lights.
To Columbia County.
Yes.
There are fifteen lights.
Oh, sure.
So, their argument is weak. Every hamlet has a light.
Right, so, so, if you take, so, again, we received our light for this.
We only get one, that's right.
We got one.
Years ago.
But that just goes to, but that goes to show you.
You made the case. And you, you made the argument in a way that was comprehensible for the DOT.
Correct. And when we said it was integral to the safety, you know, the, the business district, you know, the whole nine yards, and the same thing can be done. And having a plan in essence like this helps support that. What we have not had, what we have.
You need an argument.
You need an argument, yeah.
Yes, and, and we have gone, we have come a long way. We have an updated comprehensive plan. We are now talking about implementing those actions in that comprehensive plan. So, we are on the right road, if, you know, no pun intended, but that is the direction we're going in. You know, we've done historically very well with our environmental protections. We are excelling at improving those environmental protections. And now, we're really looking at our land use and looking at the needs of the community and things that need to be changed, whether it be zoning or roadways. You know, that's all part and parcel to creating the community that the, the citizens want.
So, now that we're back to traffic, which is very important, just one quick caveat to this. This, again, this is not the only place that one would look or think about looking to do development in the hamlet. And this should be looked at in the context of the other opportunities. Because I'm not entirely certain that you could say, "All right, we're going to do all of this here, and then we're going to go someplace else in the hamlet, like South Greeley, and put in eighty units. And then, we're going to, you know, go someplace else in the hamlet and put in thirty thousand square feet of retail." One needs to be sure that we're balancing the traffic demand capacity in all this and making the right judgment call about how much goes where. This should not be looked at in a vacuum from all of those other things.
So, it would be up to the towns perhaps then to conceptualize all the different areas of the downtown and then do an environmental, generic environmental impact that looked at what could be generated by all of these conceptual developments together.
The cumulative impact, right.
And then, you see whether you can put that much onto your.
And that is part of a GEIS.
The GEIS, yeah.
Yeah, that was a conversation we started a couple weeks ago.
Correct.
Right.
The other thing, too, just thinking about is, and making another small point.
Back on up a second.
When you put the traffic light in here, you actually make this more feasible. Without the traffic light.
That's right.
You can't have all this traffic come here because it.
Doesn't work.
It doesn't work so well even now.
Right. I mean, but, but again, it's about everyone supporting it.
Yeah, including emergency services.
I supported it.
Correct, correct. Well, well, and, and here's the thing, and I, I will tell you, it is very difficult to get unanimous support. We, we, you know, we started with the policy and now we're getting into the plan. And to do a GEIS does involve municipal and financial investment. And unless there is, is support, it's very difficult to perform one the way it should be performed, to really examine the correct impacts and, and, and really determine how, what those impacts are, can they be mitigated, and what's right for the community.
Well, this is, that's very important because you keep hitting it, and, and unified front is the key. Because the history on this, for example, on that intersection, Greg, is that back in the early nineties, the DOT finally threw up its hands because this town could not come up with a final decision and a concept. We were all over the place. And they finally said, "You got, you got six more months." And then, they extended, "You got three more months." And then, they finally said, "You're getting what we're doing," and that was it. So, really, we got the bridge, which is a beautiful bridge, and we got the intersection, which was by default, as it turned out, by my recollection, having been involved with it somewhat, is that we, we just couldn't come together. And to Sabrina's point, to the extent that we start this kind of conversation now and we're starting to coalesce around, first of all, a comp plan that we didn't have. Now, we have a comp plan. We have policy. We have legislation. We're starting to coalesce around something that makes some sense, and now we can start to move forward with the GEIS. Frankly, when we did the Volmer Plan, et cetera, we looked at the traffic. That was it. We looked at traffic. We had all those little models, the little vehicles going this way and that way.
And you have.
Nothing else. And what we did was look at little models. And we said, "This is what we want." And the DOT looked at us like we were nuts, and we were. And, you know, "Which way do you want it?" And some people wanted a light, some didn't want a light, and we wanted to loop all the way around and coming around.
And traffic is changing.
So, here's, sorry, another little caveat, but everybody remember this. Transportation policy is really just land use policy masquerading for something else. The improvements for the new bridge, right, Tappan Zee Bridge, they didn't have to build all those lanes. They could have put a rail line in there. Instead, what they did is they made capacity for a lot more traffic, which changes the land use in Rockland County like you cannot believe.
Yep.
Right? It's really land use decisions that are being made. Traffic serves that. And that's the case with this intersection on a much smaller scale, obviously.
And, and there's all sorts of new insights into the residents who live in downtowns close to transporta, train stations and whatnot, and how many of them actually own cars, how many cars. It's not the same as living in a single-family house on a, you know, quarter acre, one acre piece of property.
Are the manuals, you know, the IIE manuals, are they all now updated to reflect that kind of change in, in?
No.
Car use and, and trip generation use?
No, not at all.
How do you define update? You mean like nineteen fifty, go to nineteen eighty?
Right, I mean, but you also have to understand, we have more, there's more and more people. There's more and more people. So, it's not to say that we still don't need to look out for the expansion of traffic because of the number of cars coming in and out and the number of trips. But when you create housing in locations where there's transportation already, the dependency, particularly if you're in an area where you can get everything you need within walking distance, the dependency on a vehicle is much different than the way the community has been developed previously.
So, I guess my question is, have those changes somewhere been incorporated into how one estimates or evaluates traffic in this, in this kind of scenario?
It's a little bit too new.
It's being done, actually, though, because I, I just had, I was with an engineer and he was just telling me that within the past three or four weeks, Bronxville has changed its zoning in terms of this retail in the downtown area, and has also changed their parking requirements based on what they feel are the new changes in terms of restaurants, use, and that kind of stuff.
A lot of communities are changing their parking requirements, making it less. The pushback they get is when developers go to get tenants, the tenants say, "I don't care what your zoning says. If I don't have X amount of parking, I'm not coming here." And that's the big rub. That's, that's where the, the communities, the municipalities are, are leading that edge and they're seeing down the road, but the, the users are still saying, "Well, I need my woobie blanket," which is parking spaces. Until they, you know, eventually, it's going to get there.
That was the big, the big nut that we couldn't crack at Chappaqua Crossing was Whole Foods and their insistence on having four hundred spaces right in front of the store.
Correct.
I hear you. I, I do, that's what I deal with all the time.
It drove us all crazy.
Correct, but, but.
Felix said, "I'm trapped."
And you're an environmental company.
Right, but I have to, but I have to tell you, this area of, of the community is drastically different than Chappaqua Crossing.
Oh, sure, of course.
You know, so, we have more of a chance here.
Yes.
Yep, absolutely.